All right, good evening, everyone. I will now call the Monday, March 18th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. This evening, we have for the invocation and pledge of allegiance Reverend Susan Fitch Slater from Sharon United Methodist Church. If you'd like to come up to the lectern, thank you for coming out this evening.
Good evening. Will you stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I don't know if I should tell you to be seated or take up an offering, but let's pray. Gracious God, you have given us a good land, and we are thankful for it. You have asked us to be stewards of your kingdom. And so, Father, as this group gathers here tonight, we ask for the presence of your Holy Spirit, and that it would settle deep upon every person in this room, and especially upon these who you have placed in a position of authority. May they be stewards of your kingdom. Give them wisdom, give them discernment, give them courage, and give them faith. And remind each of us of our obligation to your kingdom, to strengthen each other, to preserve this good land, and to think forward so that our children's children will gather on nights like this and pray for you to lead them in kingdom living. We honor you, we thank you, and we praise you, and we serve you, in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right, next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a few amendments to the agenda tonight. First of all, under new business, I'd like to insert at the top of the list under new business, a resolution of censure. And then, I'd like to move the county manager's report in front of the commissioner's report. And then, I'd like to also, at the end of the meeting, have the board of commissioners enter into a closed session in number 77 GS 143-318-11A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Thank you. Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None carries unanimously, thank you. Public comment. Got quite a few people signed up this evening. Where did it go? And I noticed several of you signed up to talk about the lawn. If you'd like to, you can address that at public comment or under the agenda item. So as I call you up, if you want to address that on the agenda item, we can move you over to that portion of it. First name up this evening is Mr. Harvey Roberts. Please come up, and I'll remind everyone to state your name and address, and public comment is three minutes long. Green is go, yellow means speed up to get through the light, and red means stop, please. Thank you.
Right, my name is Harvey Roberts, 49 North Indian Town Road, Shawboro. I'm here tonight, I'm a member of the Shawboro Ruining Club, and tonight, we have members, we don't have them from all five clubs, but all five ruining clubs in Currituck County have been contacted about the problem with the recycling centers. They're Knott's Island, Moyoc, Currituck, Cornjock, and Shawboro. Combined, we represent over 125 members from different areas of the county, and we all seem to be having the same problem with the recycling centers. At this time, I'd like for just to note, a few of the ruining members, you please stand that we have here tonight. All right, we have a few of the people here. I would like to thank the county commissioners for this opportunity, for the members of the five ruining clubs in Currituck County to speak to you, the county commissioners, citizens present here tonight in the courthouse, and citizens of the county that may be watching this meeting on TV. Ruining, of course, is a service organization. We were formed in 1928 in Holland, Virginia. We're an organization that was founded to help urban and rural people together. We believe in helping our fellow citizens. We have fish fries, raffles, chicken fries, breakfast with Santa, prime rib, pork loin, many, many things. We do this to help people in need, and we have to help provide scholarships to send a lot of our young people in Currituck to college. This is one of the first times in the history of Currituck County that all five ruining clubs have come together as one group to express their voice to the county commissioners and to the citizens of Currituck County for a problem that we all share here in Currituck County. We're here tonight to ask the county commissioners, I know you're in a two-year budget cycle, to ask the county commissioners, please, what can you do to improve our recycling centers in Currituck County? There seem to be potholes everywhere, some understand it, Knott's Island, or Crowe, or Crawler, maybe even worse than the oil on the mainland far as potholes and getting stuck in water. We'd just like to have something done about that. So we're asking tonight that if you can put some, I'd have been told you've got to have retention ponds. Well, in Camden, Past Tampa, Quimmins, Cho'wan, there's no retention ponds. Practically all the recycling centers either paved or asphalted within 10 feet of a fence. I've been to Raleigh, I've been to Greenville, and I'm going to Raleigh Wednesday. I've stopped up and down the road. All the recycling centers except Currituck have a majority of pavement and asphalt. Our people don't like the idea of getting out of their vehicles and stepping in water, mud holes, or even if you don't have water, just the idea of getting grit on your feet and getting back in a nice car. So I know you're in a two-year budget cycle, we'd just like to ask the county commissioners to try to do something to avoid this problem, and that's the gist of it. So now, we're going to ask some other people to stand and tell you what they think about the problems we have at recycling centers all over the whole county.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have Elaine Roberts is our next person. Okay, thank you. Jim Hoyer?
Close. Jim Hoover?
Hoover, okay.
1999 Carrotto Kaway. My name's never pronounced right, don't worry, my friend. But 1999 Carrotto Kaway at Moyoc. You know, I'm retired, and a lot of times in the morning, I'll go over to dump, I do a lot of yard work, stuff like that. I always wear my boots over there. And something that's always kind of stuck out to me is watching folks on their way to work in the morning, getting out of their vehicle, all dressed up, and stepping in a big old mud puddle and having something splash up on them, get back in their vehicle, and now they're on their way to work. I sometimes go there and speak to some of the folks that work there, and I'll tell you what, fantastic service, appreciate it, love it. But you know, I watch them, when they get all these mud holes, they'll grate it. The next rainstorm, there's all kinds of mud puddles there again. So there's obviously a problem. And it seems like when you see that other parts of the state have it paved and things like that, doggone it, it seems like we could do the same thing in our county. That's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bebo, you're up next.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see here, Lee Jepson?
My name is Lee Jepson, I live at 106 North Marshall Road in Shawboro. And just to back up with Harvey was saying earlier, I've gone around to all the clubs in the county as a zone one governor for the District of Albemarle. Four of them are under my purview, and I've talked to all the members in those clubs. And they're all echoing the same thing we're talking about here tonight. Okay, and that, we actually went up to Knott's Island as well and included them. So that's all I want to do is let you know that they are echoing the same thing we're talking about. And I understand if they have to have a retention pond, at least a pad in the common areas between the recycle and the trash of concrete reinforced, because asphalt would just get tore up by the trucks in a heartbeat. But that's our recommendation, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This has been an issue for a while, and I know that we've brought it up more than once when Panther Landing was going through its expansion, that was the last time we had this identical conversation. What exactly is the issue with, you know, some form of preventing it? Because I have plenty of experience with the puddles at the dump as well.
Might as well. Yeah, well, I mean, obviously.
I was going to be, have the county manager address this issue after everybody had their piece.
Just thinking, if we know where we sit, maybe.
Okay. Well, thank you first for explaining to me why I got moved up to the beginning. Well, obviously, from the concerns we're hearing raised from the ruins and clubs and from other citizens, that we're not doing a good job and not staying ahead of trying to maintain a gravelled area. And I believe Mr. Jepson's comments was specifically where you would pull up and interact with the compact area. With vehicles pulling in, stopping, taking off with the weight, it just continues to move the gravel, it continues to create potholes. With all the rain we've had, I think it's rained every weekend for the last several months, the site just, they deteriorate and fall behind. We have with, we have been talking with the engineers that are doing the design of the expansion to Moyoc, and we were talking about asphalt and what we could do with asphalt. And again, I think Mr. Jepson mentioned this, the concern that we're hearing from the engineer, although no one's mentioned a stormwater pond, I don't know where a stormwater pond comment comes from. There is a comment that when you put asphalt down, if you accelerate the rate of runoff, you may have to address that through some type of stormwater plan. Does not mean you have to put a stormwater pond out there. And it, that also speaks to whether you asphalt the whole site, or if you asphalt some portion of the site. One of the concerns beyond, I mean, there's a cost associated with it, obviously, but the amount of, specifically in the summer, the waste management trucks coming in, the compactor's coming on and off, the, we feel like asphalt in the whole site would probably, it's going to create some problems in and of itself. But what we are exploring, and I think what I hear from the ruins and clubs is specifically addressing that area where you would pull up next to a compactor if we could put a pad, either a concrete pad, expand the concrete pad, or put some asphalt down in that area as an effort to try to eliminate having to walk through the standing water and the various things that there. That is, that's absolutely something we can explore. Probably can't go so far as to asphalt the entire site. There are some issues and problems that come up about that, but again, I understand what I'm hearing so far tonight is it's specifically right there where you interact with a compactor, and we can bring back, talk to engineering staff and public works, and we could bring back something specifically to look at doing something in that areas, whether it's concrete or whether it's asphalt.
The problem they have with just filling potholes, unless you tear it all up when you regrade, that pothole will come back immediately. So, and I appreciate the fact that they're just backfilling that, but we need a much better solution than what's going on right now.
And we could bring it back, I mean, it's trying to find that balance between, they are trash sites. They're only going to be, but so attractive by just the nature of what we're doing inside the fence. But that said, we can do better, and we can bring back to the board a solution to at least address that area that seems to be where the citizens are raising their concern.
Yeah, and at least where they're pulling their vehicles up to the site.
Yes.
Because you're right, even like the fire departments, when they asphalt them, I mean, they're heavy trucks are sinking, and when it gets hot, it's going to sink, so.
And you start thinking about the weight on the vehicle and the moving, the turning.
It's going to dig into asphalt, so.
So doing the whole site, our concern is that the asphalt wouldn't.
I don't think it would hold up.
Wouldn't hold up, that you'd have to concrete some areas.
Would they drop those in those, but if we can get concrete around the areas that get out of vehicles and try to at least start there.
I think that's an area that we could, we could at least look at that and price that out and look at, as mentioned, we are going into the budget process. We can look at what it would cost to come in and take a look at that area. Okay, thank you. Jason Banks, you're up next.
My name is Jason Banks, I live at 101 Empress Isle in Cornjock, Waterlily. Just here, I'm the current president of the Cornjock Ruining Club, so I'm here just echoing what Mr. Roberts has told you all. The recycling center, they're, yes, by nature, they're nasty, but to, at some point, they can be upgraded to a degree, so you don't have to get out and get into mud before you get to dump your trash. So just emphasizing that, and I am here representing my club as well.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Carrie McMillan? Did she show up tonight? You're going to wait? Okay. How about Emmett back there? Same thing? Okay, thank you. Pamela Murray? Am I reading that right?
Thank you. 101 Algonquin Trail, Shawboro, North Carolina, and to speak about the trash areas, I'd like to approach it from a different angle. We do have the sportsman's paradise, which is Currituck County, which we're all very proud of, but when you drive down that road, and those hundreds of thousands of cars drive down that road every year to come and visit our county, they have to look at these trash areas. And I think, and I appreciate all your expertise, but I do feel that what I'm hearing is, we have all these obstacles. Have you gone to the other counties? I can go to Camden County and pull into a paved area. So we do have a responsibility to our fellow community members to have an area that is clean and is approachable and well-maintained, and also to present a beautiful area in which we live to all those people that do visit. So I would like very much for the commissioners to pay some close attention to this concern that all the community members have brought forward tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you much. And lastly, I know I'm going to get this one right, it looks like Eden Miller, possibly?
No, Edwin Miller.
Edwin Miller, okay. Yeah, that was for Ollon. Did you want to wait?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You were right the first time.
I had it right, all right. We were trying to figure that out. That's all I have, sign up for public comment this evening. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you. This time, I'll close public comment. And, well, I had moved Dan up to speak for the county manager's report to address that. Was there anything else that you needed to address at this time, sir? No, thank you, not tonight.
We're going to dismiss.
Okay, all right.
I invite all the county commissioners, go to all the other counties, there are 90% paved and asphalt, no problems.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Manager, the sites, and I know this from having trailers and my business, you know, I have to take my stuff to the commercial site and pay to dump, because you can't take commercial trash there. They don't, I mean, I don't, you won't see, I know this on TV, you won't see one of my trucks in there, but the citizens, a lot of time, are going in there, and it's not, they're for hire, but they don't have a logo on a truck or something like that, and they're dumping tons of debris, taking heavy trailers in there. Trailers are not permitted to go in those sites, and they don't enforce that.
Well.
Is that something we could address with them?
Well, first, it'd be helpful, the, we contract the operation of the site, so I appreciate the comment that someone said they're very not, that, that's not a county employee, the contractor actually operates inside the fence. Part of that contract, they are supposed to be proactive in verifying that it is a Currituck County property or a resident that's visiting site. You are correct, you're not supposed to be bringing in business trash into that site, you're supposed to take it right to the transfer station. They're supposed to go out and engage and ask questions, and we certainly can reemphasize that that needs to be done.
Is that's.
You can take, there is a, there's a certain volume that you're allowed to take in there. If you've got a half, a F-150, you can take a trailer behind that and go in. There is a limit, though, of quantity, where we do refer you to take you actually right to the transfer center versus going into, because we, there's a cost every time the container gets pulled out. So if you're bringing large loads in, they will redirect you to go to the transfer site. If you're commercial, you're not supposed to be going in the sites.
Not at all.
Correct.
And I will comment that, you know, the last time we were having problems with the bulk material was, they were, they were filling all the bulk containers on the weekend, and I will tell you that that has gotten a lot better than it was, because, you know, we, again, had been proactive and said, let's get them emptied prior to going into the weekend. So waste management is being responsive. I think it's, you know, it's a perfect storm between the weather and the.
And I believe the limit is, I think it's 500 pounds.
At the trans, at the.
At bringing in convenience centers.
Where 500 is great.
Well, I think 500 going into a convenience center, and what we've always asked the attendant is to allow them that first time to go ahead and dump, but remind them or educate them, because we certainly don't want someone to get frustrated and just go outside the gate and leave it somewhere else in the public right of way. So we generally, but if you're hauling in more than 500 pounds, we do, you are supposed to go actually to the transfer center, station there and dispose of it there versus going through the convenience center. Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we'll get to commissioners' report now that we're done discussing that. I don't have much this evening, just want to let people know that we just had a work session with a consulting group that we hired to represent us in Raleigh and above our legislators that are there. And again, remind people that those work sessions are open to the public. So if you check the agenda and you see something on there that maybe interests you, you can come and listen to what we're saying, what we're doing, and, and just hear how some of the process is done and the thought process that went into these things. We often hear that, you know, we have, people just don't understand how we arrived at the decision we did, and we didn't just arrive there, it was through consultation with staff and amongst ourselves to get there. And so I just wanted to remind the public that that is available to them, and to please, please check the agenda and come in if there's something that interests you. So that's it for me tonight.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Etheridge?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing tonight.
Since we were talking about trash, I'm going to touch on trash again. We get a lot of complaints, I get phone calls from citizens about the roadways. The last two trips, one was today, and I checked before I left the Sheriff's Department to come to the commissioners' meeting. They got almost 300 pounds of trash the last two times between three inmates and one, the supervisor, up and down the road. They went from Barco Road to Maple Road, both sides, and got right at 40 bags of trash. So as citizens in the community, if anybody's watching this at home or in the audience, we need to do better on cleaning up after ourselves. 40 bags of trash, 600 pounds on two trips this month that we've gotten. And, you know, the weather's been awful, so they haven't went as much, but they usually do at least one day a week, and it's crazy, the amount of trash that we get, so.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes, without objection, I'd like the board to write a letter to NCDOT and ask them to study putting a left-hand turn lane at the end of Tulse Creek Road and Carrottoke Highway there in Moyoc. I've pulled out of there a lot of mornings, and I can see traffic packed up past where they turn to go into the school, and it causes people to take chances to get out ahead of the next lane coming out of Tulse Creek Road. It'll probably be a two or three-year process, but it's got to start somewhere, and I'd like to just make a formal request to DOT to start studying putting that left-hand turn lane there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Jarvis?
I just went this past week, on March 12th, to my first Trillium Northern Regional Advisory Board meeting. I was sworn in, and we had great discussions. I know Bland Baker is here tonight to talk in detail about that, which I did request that he come. I believe he had a lot of really good information about the Medicaid transformation rollout and the crisis plan that each county is going to need to do. So I look forward to serving.
Thank you. All right. Next agenda item is administrative reports, and we have someone from Trillium Health to give their annual report. That would be Ms. Bland Baker, the regional director. Thank you, sir, how are you doing this evening?
Good, how are you? Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity and commissioners to come and just talk briefly, give an annual report about what's been going on with Trillium this past year, and I want to publicly thank Commissioner Jarvis. Appreciate that appointment, I think she's going to be great to work with, she's going to be a great, I think, representative for Currituck County, and then a great participant in my advisory board. Along with Dr. Barbara Corey is also your other appointee that's been on for a little while. So I look forward to continuing to work with both of them, so. So just to kind of get started, I think the common denominator for what's been going on with Trillium last year has moved into this year's change. That's all we've been dealing with, is change, and we had been doing that last year, and we'll continue to do that this year. We've had changes in our coverage, we've had legislation changes, we've had funding changes, we've had organizational changes, we've had just a lot of different changes. So what I would just talk about first, in terms of coverage, we added one more county to our catchment area, which brought us to 26 counties. July 1, we brought Columbus County, and it makes us 26 counties now. And one of the things with adding Columbus County, it actually brought our Medicaid eligibles up to 205,000, which means that that's how our, that's how we're funded, based on our Medicaid eligibles from the state and federal government in our Medicaid funding. We served 54,000 people last year in our 26 counties, and actually, that came to about $355 million is what it cost us to provide services or to manage the services of those individuals. So in terms of legislative changes, this is one of the biggest changes that Medicaid has seen in the last 40 years. In June of last year, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill 403, which addresses Medicaid transformation. It basically looks at Medicaid and divides it in two separate plans. So you see, you've got the tailored plan, and you've got the standard plan. And basically, what that does is it actually puts anyone that has a mild to moderate mental health diagnosis in the tailored plan, in the standard plan population, anybody that has a severe mental illness, it puts into the tailored plan along with the state-funded services as well. So this is the first time this has ever been divided. So it's, this is going to be a big change for Trillium and all the other MCOs across the state, and it's going to be a big change for those insurance companies that are going to be providing services in the standard plan as well. Let's see. All right, in terms of funding changes, I don't see that slide, but anyway, I'm probably, anyway, so in terms of funding changes, so what's going to happen, the standard plans are going to be run by commercial insurance companies. It'll be the first time that they will ever manage any Medicaid dollars, so this is going to be a big change for them as well. I think one of the greatest things about Medicaid transformation is going to be that it's going to combine the physical health, the behavioral health, and the pharmacy services of all of our Medicaid and state-funded population. So it's not only going to be a change for the commercial plans, it'll be a change for us as well. Trillium typically has only managed the behavioral health services of individuals in our counties, and now we're going to be adding the physical health as well as the pharmacy benefits. And as I said, in the standard plans, they were awarded to insurance companies, and the insurance companies, for the first time, will be managing Medicaid dollars, which is something that will be new for them as well. One of the greatest things, I think, in all this change is that we'll be more focused on one-person care, whole persons, so you will have to go to one insurance company for one type of service, and another insurance company for another type. So you will have one insurance card for the Medicaid population, that they will be addressed with the physical health, the behavioral health, and the pharmacy services as well. So it'll be a more whole. of, um, all of our Medicaid and state-funded population. So it's not only going to be a change for, um, the commercial plans, it'll be a change for us as well. Trillium typically has only managed the behavioral health services of individuals in our counties, and now we're going to be adding the physical health as well as the pharmacy benefits. And as I said, in, in the standard plans, um, they were awarded to insurance companies. And the insurance companies, for the first time, will be managing Medicaid dollars, which is something that will be new for them as well. Um, one of the greatest things, I think, um, in all this change is that we'll be more focused on one-person care, whole persons, so you will have to go, um, to one insurance company for one type of service and another insurance company for another type. So you will have one insurance card for the Medicaid population that they will be addressed with the physical health, the behavioral health, and the pharmacy services as well. So it'll be a more whole-person type of approach to care that we've not really had before. Okay. In terms of the timeline, um, in February of this year, um, the actual, now, the, the standard contracts have been awarded to the insurance companies. Um, those insurance companies were AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, uh, United Health and WellCare. Those are four insurance companies that'll be statewide that will be managing the tailored plans. They applied for the request for proposal and they were awarded that, um, this year in February. And so, and between July and September of this year, um, individuals will be able to sign up for whatever insurance company they actually want to, to go with. And, um, they'll be rolling out the standard plan in two phases. The first phase, which will be covered in the Triangle and Piedmont area, that will be in November. And the second phase, which all the other area of North Carolina, which will include Trillium at that point, won't roll out until February of 2020. The other, um, continued timeline is that, um, in February of 2020, the RFP for the tailored plans will be posted on the Division website. The MCOs, which is Trillium and the other six across the state, will be the only organizations that will be able to apply to that RFP for the tailored plan. We may all get, we may not all get selected. They're going to select between five and seven. There are seven of us across the state and not all of us may get selected. That just remains to be seen at this point. But we're working and doing everything we can to, to position ourselves so that we'll be able to respond to the tailored plan and have everything in place that, um, that we need to in order, um, to be able to, um, apply and to respond and to do a good job with that. Uh, let's see. Um, so in May of this year, the state will award those tailored plans. We'll find out if we actually get one of the, um, the tailored plan awards. In February of 2021, we'll have a readiness review before we can actually, actually really go live. And then in July 2021, we'll go live with the tailored plan. Seems like that's kind of a long way away, but it really isn't considering everything that we have to do in order to get prepared, such as, um, get re-accredited by another accrediting body that is going to be a change for, that the state is requiring among a lot of other things. So one of the other things that we've been looking at in terms of organizational changes, one of the big, um, focuses of the tailored plan is, um, understanding and addressing social determinants of health. And the state has identified five of those, and that is, um, employment, food, um, in addition to that, it was housing and, um, transportation, and then personal safety. And the Division has cited these as the social determinants that greatly affect how well people are and mentally as well as physically. So what we know is that when all of these social determinants are not being met and there are disparities across those, um, five areas, the, the cost of healthcare, whether it's physical or behavioral, is an increase. So, and I can't work on my recovery if I'm worried about where I'm, where, where I'm going to live or, or my housing is not stable or whether I'm going to be able to, um, have enough food to feed my children or whether I can get to where I need to go. So that's why, um, it's been a very big focus, um, with the Division and the Secretary to address these social determinants. That's one of the things that we have done to be proactive. We actually have, um, developed a new department called Neighborhood Connections. And we've hired individuals that will be associated with each of, um, of our counties and our catchment area to actually, in, address those needs in our communities. We'll be using, um, some of our county funds to address those, um, in the, in the community. And, um, so we're working very hard to do that. The other thing that we're going to do with this new, uh, department is, um, have member engagement sessions. We'll actually be, um, going two, three times a month to each county to educate the community, the individuals in our communities about Trillium, what their services are. We'll be, um, doing that either that, um, health departments or DSSs is where we're going to target, but we'll be doing that, it's going to start in April. So we're making every effort to try to be sure that our communities are educated about who we are, what services are available, how to access services. Uh, I wanted to mention one thing about opioid funding. You know, we get, I've been getting Cures funding. One of the issues is when you get funding from, from the state, they, it usually comes with stipulations. So it's, it depends on, you have to spend it according to where the, the state tells you they have to spend it. So for last year, we actually served 1,880 people with our Trillium funding, which was around $3 million. Um, this year already, even at a half a year, we've already served twice as many people as that with the funding that we have gotten so far. So, um, that is a good thing. And so when you get the funding, you never know what the stipulations are going to be. With last year, it was, um, to be spent on anybody that had never received treatment before. If they were new to treatment for, um, substance use opioid treatment, we got to use that funding for those individuals or anybody that, um, had been out of treatment for 60 days and then wanted to go back into treatment. And also, one of the other, um, funding requirements was Medicaid assist, uh, med, medicine-assisted treatment, medication-assisted treatment, which is individuals that are going in for methadone or, um, you know, those types of drugs to help people with their, their addiction. So we were kind of restricted to use that funding, um, on those individuals. So specifically in Currituck County, um, last year we served 724 individuals. 590 of those had mental health issues, um, 120 of those had substance abuse issues, and then 109 of those had intellectual development disabilities. And, uh, in terms of how much money that was spent for Currituck County, it was $6,338,000 in terms of services, um, for Currituck County. One of the other things we've done specifically in Currituck County is, um, we have, um, we have offered and have managed to contract providers to do school-based therapy. We had integrated family services in the school system for a couple of years. And then more recently, because of the increase in the, the need for additional, um, outpatient treatment in the school systems, I believe, Currituck added Pride as the other provider. So now all 10 schools have school-based therapy. I think they split the schools five and five is the way they have worked that. So I think that's, um, that's been a, a very good thing for, for Currituck County. We've done that in some other schools as well.
Can I, can I ask you a question on that before you go to your next slide?
Sure.
Does mental health commit to IBCs that we've serviced 590 or the substance abuse? Now, is that what, that the state and y'all have spent, does that factor in the transports? Does that factor in all that other stuff of that $6 million?
No, because we, because we, we don't pay for the transport.
That's just their cost? Okay.
That's paid by the county.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
So, and this, this, I guess, um, it's, I guess it could include the IBCs, but it's not the IBC process. Anybody who got treatment from Currituck County in these categories is in that figure.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, let me, before, if we were going any further, I keep saying, uh, Tracy's come with me, and the last time I was in County County, I just didn't even introduce her, but I wanted to come.
Hi, Tracy.
Tracy Webster is the System of Care Coordinator that's, that's assigned to Currituck County. Um, and she actually, um, is involved in the Community Collaborative of Currituck County. They meet every other month. Focus mainly on children's services. I'm just going to tell you that sometimes. Um, they focus on children's services, um, law enforcement sometimes, um, DSSs come to the table, either providers that provide the services in Currituck County. And the main, main issue is looking at gaps and needs in the county around children's services and other services. Is that right, Tracy? Did I get it right?
Yes.
Okay. She's also involved in the JCPC meeting that meets, is that Muffley?
Yes.
Okay. As well. So, um, I just wanted, you all can see her because she's in, she's in your county quite a bit, so, and, and very involved, so, um, that was really all I had, I believe. That's, that's it. Um, if y'all have any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Yes, Mr. Baker, just, uh, one question. Do you, I know we have one of those kiosks in the Barco Library.
Yes.
Um, is that, can you tell if that's being, um, utilized or, uh, we, do we keep promoting that out there or is it?
Um, I actually didn't bring those figures. I, I do get a quarterly report about that.
Okay.
And, um, so what I can say is it seems that, um, there's more use, um, being made out of the website. Website is connected to the kiosk. That was just a way to get people interested, but you can actually log on to the very same website in your home, on your computer, on your iPhone, and get the same surveys, do the same, um, assessments, get all kinds of feedback as well. So, but it has been utilized a lot, but it is, it has been utilized some. So as far as I'm concerned, if it happens to one person, it's probably worth it. You know, um, let's see if there's anything else I was gonna, let's say. One of the other things I will mention that we just did, we actually got a grant, it's a $2.5 million grant from the state around school safety. And I say that because that's the focus of a lot of discussion these days with school violence and bullying, those kind of things. And so, um, actually, we, we are putting together some trainings that are epic space that will be on our, um, learning portal with teachers and school staff. That's where you have to log in, it's free, go in and do those trainings at their leisure. There are fact sheets and tip sheets for school personnel as well as parents. They can go on and download those, so that gives them some insight, um, in how to keep kids safe in, um, in some...
You're bumping up against a bike there on your right shoulder, sir. Raise that up just a pinch. All right. We thought somebody was tearing the seats up behind you back there.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
You had mentioned that, uh, we might not be selected, Trillium, for the tailored plan. How would that affect our county if you weren't selected for the tailored plan?
Well, what that would do is that they would just include these counties that we already have, um, into another MCO, which would be for the tailored plan. I don't have any idea, I'll be honest, that, that we won't be selected. Um, as much work as we're trying to do, but that would be what would happen. And the other thing we talked about in the other night in terms of the regions, um, the county Commissioners have been, uh, the Secretary reached out to the Commissioners about, um, through the Northern Association of County Commissioners and asked for each MCO to appoint one county commissioner. And then, uh, the Northern Association is appointing a committee of county Commissioners to help with the regions of the tailored plan, and that's got to be done by June 1st. And our actual representative is, um, is, um, Wally Orkman from Derrick County. He actually is no longer on our governing board, but he is still a Commissioner. He's going to be serving, he's going to be our representative on that board to look at the, the actual regions that were following the MCOs. But I'm not going to think that, that we won't get selected. I'm just not going to think that way.
Power of positive thinking, right?
Right.
Um, the, uh, the kiosk that Mr. Payment, Commissioner Payment, uh, mentioned, does that have to be, stay at the library? Is that something that can be moved around?
If, um, if, if you all want to move that to another location and you think it might work better, and, and in a couple of other counties, we have actually moved it from one place to another. We could certainly take a look at that and talk about that.
Yeah, I would think at this point, everybody who's going to see it has kind of seen it where it's at.
Same, right.
So if it, you know, if there's somewhere else that it could be better utilized in the county, I'm, I'm sure that would be, um, helpful.
Okay. And I could, I could end that conversation with Commissioner Jarvis and send you to the board.
Right here in this room? Upstairs. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Any other questions?
I have one, I have one more question.
Okay.
The 26 counties, I mean, I know it's from the east, so how far west do we go? Do we go all the way to Pitt?
Now, uh, yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, we, um, actually, I want to say Columbus County might be the furthest west. Um, we, we are from, um, of course, we're from the South Carolina border to the Virginia border. But I think Pitt is the furthest west that, that we actually got.
Okay. The other thing, when you said the comment about the, the service, that's one thing, and I know, and I, I deal with this a lot from my other position, the, the IBCs, I mean, the county, we spend, and it's not just a money thing, but I mean, we transport from Currituck to the mountains. The 26 counties, if it's, you know, Trillium or whatever, I mean, could, there's enough facilities, are other facility, are other counties bringing IBCs, involuntary commitments to our 26 counties as well? I mean, is that something where we could cut down on a cost of a dollar from, from our county to having to transport somebody from past Winston-Salem to Asheville or whatever?
Well, you know, of course, and I guess it's no secret, it's not in the feds.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think we're going to get any more. So, um, and, and, and that's a conversation at the state level, that's not with the local level, anyway. But I guess what I would say is anybody in North Carolina, if there's an inpatient unit, it can't be specifically to serve this county and nobody else. So, um, it is also conceivable that they may bring somebody from Raleigh into a facility that we may have in our catchment as well. I mean, especially if you're building Medicaid, you can't say, "I'm sorry, but you can't come in my facility." So, but obviously, the further west you go, they're going to try to keep those folks that way. But, you know, in some situations, I know, and I hear it all the time, and, and I know that we transport our folks past Raleigh sometimes, and quite a bit of time. And then you got to turn around and go back and get them after they've had their stay. And usually it's not over a seven, seven-day window that they stay if you go back and get them. So I realize that's a problem and, and we, we, we know that's a problem.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Is there any way that you, we could set up for this transport? Because when I served on mental health board years ago, that was one of our big concerns. Uh, reimbursement schedules like we do EMS, where you bill for transport just like you would an ambulance?
And you, are you able to do that?
Medicaid or private insurance companies?
Okay. Um, I know that Senate Bill 630, which is, this is not the place to discuss that, because it's way too involved and takes too much time. But I know that one of the things that is addressed is the transportation agreement that we talked quite a bit about. But it's, it's very clear that it says that, um, that the county is responsible for transporting, um, picking up those folks with a custody order and transferring them for treatment in situations that the private insurance, I think there are, I do believe it speaks to billing the actual insurance companies at some point for some of that transportation. But, um, you know, I, I'm not sure how, how involved that is or how much that is. But it does speak to being able to bill other people to reimburse for those insurance companies, you know, for the insurance of the transportation.
Because I know that y'all have transported to Morganton before.
Mm-hmm.
And then have to turn around and go back and get them. And that's, what, 350 miles one way?
We've had, people have to stay the night over because it's a, a nine-hour transport. You got to pay for a hotel and all their meals.
Right.
And then they come back in three days.
That's right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, anything further? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming out this evening.
That's an item for the cleases.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have a public hearing in action on PB 18-27, University Park. Uh, this is to amend the 2006 land use plan and future, future classification map from limited surface to full surface and to allow an increase in density from 1.5 units per acre to three units per acre located at the University Park Development and Popular Branch. And, uh, normally I call Lori up, but she can hang loose or come on up, but I'm going to have Dan jump in for just a minute because there was some question, I was hearing from some of the other Commissioners, just to kind of shed a little more light on this item.
Um, yes, sir. We've actually received a handful of, uh, questions or comments in, in the, in the last week or so about this item. So I, I think it's important that we, we understand what is before, or what's pending before the board tonight and what isn't pending before the board tonight. the board tonight, and what isn't pending before the board tonight. And it probably is easier to discuss what isn't in front of you tonight. University Park LLC has, in the past, received a site-specific plan and a use permit for phases one and two of the project that, to my understanding, has been now completed. That item or any commentary associated with that items is not before you tonight. I believe also there is some plans that have been circulated in the public about perhaps what the intention of phase three, what it may look like. I personally have seen one that shows connectivity with West Mobile, you know, road layouts. That is not before you tonight. In fact, if the applicant proceeds, depending on how the board acts tonight, any site-specific questions, concerns, that would be associated with the future phase of University Park, will come before you in a public hearing, but that will be at a later date. So if somebody from the community wants to comment or have input, they will have that opportunity, but tonight is not that time for that item. What is in front of you tonight is pretty straightforward and pretty simply, an amendment to the land use plan currently existing. The applicant, and Ms. LaCicero will show you some maps. It is currently an area that's designated as limited services. And the applicant is requesting that that be amended to full service. What's interesting about this and relatively unique is, the county for two or three years now has been working on an update to the 2006 land use plan. And although the Board of Commissioners adopts that plan, that plan is, reflects a vision of the community. A tremendous amount of public input goes into how these maps look like. And with the updated map, which now is at the state going through the state approvals, it will be coming back to you in a month or two for you to consider. In the map that is tracking, the request that the applicant has in front of you is already included in that map. So the community input supported and recognized this particular area of the county as a growth potential, as an area that would be supported for growth, and again, that's reflected. So awkward thing about it could be, depending on what your action tonight is, you're sort of gonna hear this again in 30 days or 90 days when the land use plan comes back in because it's gonna reflect the same kind of change. And again, that's tracking to you. And so what's really before you tonight is simply an applicant request to amend the designation on the land use plan from limited service to full service. It does equate to density. So it is a request that when they bring back to you at a future date, a site-specific plan, that plan, if you were to approve the crest tonight, would be able to come to you with a little bit higher density. But that will be in front of you where the public can come, they can make comments about connectivity, they can make comments about layout. So there will be that opportunity, it's just not tonight. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. You stole my spiel. But before you, is a request to amend the future land use map of the future land use plan, the 2006 future land, 2006 land use plan. The property is located at the, pretty essentially, the corner of West Mobile Road and Carrottoke Highway. It is the University Park area, Alon Vacations. This is the first step, like Mr. Scanlon said, this is the first step in being able to ask for more residential units. Phase one of this project was a commercial out front. Phase two was 39 residential units in the back of the property. They have currently began construction on the last building of those 39 units. The applicant will still need to come back before the board to ask not only to amend, to amend the master plan, because it is associated with the planned development, but they also need to come back and ask for a use permit change to go, but that would be further down the road. This is just, essentially, we're asking for a color change on a map in order to begin their process. Currently, it is zoned, PDM, which is Planned Development Mixed Use. You see around it is general business and ag zoning around the location. Currently, it is zoned limited service, and it's yellow on, with the ortho, but it kinda gets washed out. It is yellow on the map, full service is orange, full service is just, and you can't, I'm pulling.
Can't really see on this new TV.
Right.
Full service is just there. So it's, full service is located about 900 feet away from this location. Like Mr. Scanlon said, this area will be designated a G3, a mixed-use center. It's gonna be a little bit higher density than right now, the limited service area. And right now, the land use plan, the Imagine Currituck draft, has this as proposed, three units per acre without sewer in the Point Harbor area. So just to give you a brief history of this project, the project was rezoned in 2013 to the PD mixed use, and in 2015, an approval was for, a use permit was approved for 39 residential units. So in order for this project to add any more units on their approval, it says specifically that they cannot ask, that no more residential units can be approved at the current limited service designation on the land use map. So they need to change that limited service to full service, and that's their ask before you tonight. There was a site plan, as you can see, a site plan was included in this application, but that site plan is not before you, we're back to, it's a color on a map that they're asking for. So because of the location, sorry, because of where the future land use map in Imagine Currituck, this area is essentially from South Spot Road to the Wright Memorial Bridge. You see that area that fronts Carrottoke Highway has that G3, that mixed-use center and corridor, that G3 designation that would give this area a little bit higher density, a little bit more commercial opportunity. It's essentially to support the water park and all the potential tourist destinations down there with the golf courses and the water park, things of that nature. So staff does recommend approval of this, of this request for the change in the future land use map. One, because it does, it will be reflected in the new Imagine Currituck future land use map. And there's also a policy emphasis in the Point Harbor subarea to allow portions of that area to continue to develop, sorry, to continue to evolve as a full-service area, as well as having a range, having a range of housing types and prices. Planning Board did recommend approval of this land use plan amendment, and the vote was four to one. And I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, just so I'm clear again, the applicant will be coming before us to, with a site-specific plan for a use permit. And at that time, if the commissioners or any citizens have any concerns, questions, comments about the project being presented to be built, that would be the appropriate time to address them?
Correct.
So the only thing we're approving tonight is just, just to change.
Change in the color on the map in order for them to ask for more density.
Okay, because they'll be coming back before us then, and then we can go over discussing, okay, all right.
Conditions.
Conditions. There's a, there was actually a few steps to this process. They would be, they would have to come back before you and amend the master plan that's associated with the rezoning, the planned development mixed residential. And then they would also need to come back and amend their use permit. So at that time, you could put conditions or address concerns for the project specific. So right now, they're asking for a color change on the future land use map.
And that color change, if we drop them into the, what would be the new G3, this is, the density that they're ostensibly asking for falls within that, it's not a greater density, in other words, than what the future land use map would allow for.
In the draft Imagine Currituck, correct.
Right, okay.
That G3 is within that threshold that they're asking for.
Yeah, just to make sure everybody's clear on that.
I have one question. The units, it's 39 units, you said they were under construction of a new, how many units are there now? Because you said, did you say something about another?
I think the last building, that they're, they're under construction.
That's, that will make 39?
That will top them out at 39.
Okay. Thank you.
I think some of the confusion is we have a site plan in your agenda package, and my recommendation is ignore it because it may or may not look like that, but it doesn't matter, that's not what's in front of you, in hindsight, perhaps not including that. Because even if you looked at it and liked it, the applicant may change it or tweak it before it comes back to you, but that all, that whole conversation will occur at a future public hearing. Tonight, it's just about, as Ms. LaCicero said, the color on the land use plan.
So if we were thinking about, I know at the public comment meeting they had, there was a lot of concern about the buffer. So that would be addressed at a later time.
That we address when we're talking about the site-specific plan. There's conversation about connectivity with West Mobile, that would be site-specific plan conversation. The buffer, the alignment, all of that, any comment associated to what that project looks like would be more appropriate when that issue was in front of the board, which is not tonight.
So approving this will not change anything? Do you give it more authority?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for, we'll get to you in just a second, we'll get to the staff part of this. Any further questions for others? Okay, thank you. For this time, invite the applicant forward if you'd like to speak to anything this evening. Okay. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks, Brian Suomo, House Engineer, and we'll thank everybody for the time. What I have here is a copy, approximately 35 signatures from the adjacent property owners. Look for packages, and like, see, we're all proof of what we're trying to do. Now, I had a small power court presentation, I don't, okay, good. Excellent, thank you. Now, Mr. Scanlon and Ms. LaCicero took a lot of my thunder away because they've explained.
Just before you jump into that, what you handed us, is that approval for the rezoning?
For the rezoning, just for the land use map.
Just make sure we're on the same page.
Just the land use map only, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Scanlon, Ms. LaCicero took a little bit of my thunder, but what we're talking about is phase three, University Park. All right. I'm gonna skip over this because we've kind of talked about the site plan, and it's not very specific to what we're doing, and we'll bring that back at another time. Again, this is another, showing where the color change is on the map. You can see where the existing units are and where it goes down to West Mobile Road. There's a good shot of phase two. Now, phase two's been very, very successful, and these are the same units, we'll take the same type of structure directly over to the next phase. They, they're well-received, well-liked, and there's a waiting list to get into these things. Okay. In our development, in our community, we realized that we got to have community input, we gotta have staff, we gotta have everybody's input. And it is crucial, it's crucial for us, and it's crucial for all successful projects, not just this one. It helps our development. It helps them to identify needs in the community and the concerns, which in this case, there's a need for housing. There's, like I say, a waiting list for this. And also, we wanna be in harmony with the neighborhood and the environment. We wanna make sure that buffers are good, that everybody's happy, we wanna make sure that we're giving back to the community, because every good development has to give something back to the community to make it successful. We did have a community meeting, this was back in February, and I just wanna go through this briefly, show you that we did have one at the clubhouse at University Park. And a lot of the items that were brought up, we just, we briefly discussed, but 90% of these, again, will be items that will be brought up during the site plan, site plan approvals at a later date. Those were concerned, stormwater, which will be in a stormwater plan, connections to West, excuse me, to West Mobile Road and things of that nature. Again, it's more concerns, and those are in your package. Community benefits. When you do things in community, you need to benefit that community as well. So with this proposal, again, this is, we'll come back to you with the next phase, but we're looking to increase public safety. And what I mean by that is, our client's looking to put fire hydrants, a fire hydrant out on West Mobile Road, which there's not one now. He's looking to bring water line extension from Amherst, which is on University Park, to West Mobile Road, which will give greater access for the citizens there. Those two things right there can also help increase property values for the surrounding neighborhoods. And also, let me go down here, okay. This little clip here will show where we're proposing, and this again is in the future of the site plan, but it also shows what we're giving back to the community. You'll look to one side, you'll see where the existing fire hydrant is now, out on Carrottoke Highway, and the one that's coming up will be approximately 1,200 feet down West Mobile Road, which adds fire protection. It's not there at all now. There's a good shot of where the existing one is. And there's a shot of where the existing one is and the proposed one it will be. Okay, back to phase two a little bit. Like we said, it's almost complete. And this phase, when it's done, before it's done, we'll have to have final approvals from the county, final approvals from the state for stormwater, things of that nature. And that, those will be stormwater lighting, buffers and everything, before they can get a final. So that's in phase two, which is still almost complete. And there's a good shot of the last building, these pictures are about two weeks old, and that's the last building started construction. Talking about the site work a little bit more on the existing phase two, before it's completed, that phase two, we'll have to get state and county approvals. And these are actual pictures that you'll see in the background, taken from the last couple of weeks, and everything's looking pretty good out there. Everything's greening up, you can see the lighting's in, the buffers are in. There's a few things left, but before it's finalized, we will have to complete everything that's on that plan. Now, phase two has been very successful in addressing a small portion of the needs for good, clean housing in southern Currituck County. And again, I've mentioned this a couple, couple times, there's currently a waiting list, and there's a need for this type of housing. The community, it provides safe community housing, it gives amenities such as basketball, community pool, clubhouse, gym, safe places to walk and exercise. Just give you a couple shots of what's going on. The clubhouse itself, it's, will be part of the whole community, and it's not just a clubhouse to work out here, it's a common area, where you can have birthday parties, community meetings, things of that nature. So it's a multi-use type program. And we talked a little bit about the process. This has been brought up several times tonight, this is a proposed amendment to the small portion of the land use plan, not the zoning use. When it fit, if it's approved tonight, then it would have to go to KAMA because it's part of their land use plan, then they have to approve this portion of it. And then we'll come back, start all over again with a major process again. And all of this is prior to starting any work on phase three. So it'll be a lot of transparency and a lot of communication back and forth. And our commitment, now, this was a couple of weeks ago, we're sitting around talking about this with Norman Carolyn, and he made some comments, and I wrote them down, and I thought I would share these, and he doesn't even know I'm doing this. He made some comments that I think is good for all developments. It says, "We encourage community input, we work together, we get a superior result and a better end product that everyone can be proud of participating in and improving." And to me, that's not just for this development, not just for Currituck County, that's any development anywhere you go. You have to have a community involvement from all sides to get the best product. So that's all I've got. If you've got any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. This time I'll open public comment. And first up, Mr. Bebo, if you'd like to speak to this matter, please do.
Yeah, Norman Bebo, I am the owner of University Park, formerly the owner of Alon Vacations. But, you know, what we're looking to do, we, you know, we had this approval, and it goes back to 2013. and it goes back to 2013 where, you know, you guys supported me with this idea of, you know, some type of market-priced housing, you know, there was definitely a need for it in Lower Currituck. And, you know, you gave me the support. We proved what we could do. I think we came up with a beautiful development. I mean, we did things for you guys before stuff was supposed to happen. I mean, there was concern that we weren't going to put in a pool. We weren't going to do a clubhouse. We weren't going to do a playground. And all that stuff, we went ahead and we did, knowing that this project was going to be successful. So, now, here we are at the end of it. We're on our last building of six units, which will give us the 39. And what we're looking to do now is to proceed with that Phase 3. I definitely think there's still a need of it. And, you know, we're looking for you guys to, I don't know, change the density, I guess, is the terminology, which, from what I understand, is going to be changed anyway. So, it's really just a formality. But if you approve this tonight, then we can get moving and go ahead, get the camera approval and whoever else is on board. And then we can come back to you and with, you know, the next phase and, you know, everybody in the community gets a chance to discuss, you know, their concerns, you know, their apprehension about it or their support of it. So, that's what we're here for tonight. Thank you.
Sir, appreciate it. All right, Ms. Carrie McMillan.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Carrie McMillan. We own the adjacent property to a law, or University Park. My question is, is they, for, all they want to do is change the color on a map. Their engineer and their site plans are pretty complete for needing to rush this process to get started on, you know, getting their whole project going. The other thing is, I do understand that there is a need for housing in this area. We own a farm next door. We actually had a successful business growing local pork and produce for restaurants in the area. Unfortunately, we were no longer able to continue that business as we were confronted as a nuisance by Mr. and Mrs. Bebo. I do have a letter here from seven restaurant owners in the area saying, you know, complaining that they had bought our pork in the past and our food and we would be willing to again. And they, you know, wish we still had that asset available to us. Unfortunately, I know Mr. Bebo says that, you know, he wants to work with us, but several times, we have tried to come to a conclusion. And he refuses to even speak with us in person. I can hear Carolyn right behind me now whispering. It's just, I just want to get this over. We're done fighting.
Right.
And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just, when this comes back before us, any concerns, you know, we'll have discussions on those and get feedback from both and everyone out there to make sure, you know. But right now, you're right. This is, I mean, we're not even going to have those discussions until that comes before us. So, thank you.
Mr. Emmett McMillan?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Emmett McMillan. I own 164 West Mobile Road. I understand, like, a lot of this stuff is going to be tabled till the next meeting, you know. I guess we were a little misunderstood about, you know, what we were coming here for tonight. But I'd like to just kind of clear up a few things that were just brought to your attention by the engineer. I guess you got 35 petitions, he said, from adjoining properties. There's not 35 adjoining properties. Is that correct? There's not 35, you know, boarding properties. I am the majority property owner.
All right, nothing from... They were quiet when you spoke. Let's allow Ms. McMillan to do her thing. Thank you.
There's not 35 adjoining property owners. There might be 10, maybe 12. I am the majority property owner. We are the ones that are feeling the effects of more people, more everything. We have had to deal with this from day one. I told Mr. McCord, and I think Ms. Etheridge was on the original board when this got approved, I told you I'd be back up here to tell you I told you so. And here we are, you know. The right precautions were not taken to make sure that these properties could mesh. Told you guys condos and a farm wasn't going to work, you know. Mr. Debo said, "Oh, no, rural environment is great." Mr. Payment, you were part of that process, you know. This is what we're trying to protect. There's not 35 adjoining properties. We are the majority property owner that but them. You know, benefit the community. What, fire hydrant? That's what we're offering? I come to the planning board meeting. I listened to two other developers, big-scale projects. Their first and foremost thing was, what are we going to do to make the property owners beside benefit? You know, that was their first and foremost. Ditching, fences, you know, all this stuff. I don't hear that. You know what I get? I get threatened to get sued because I'm a nuisance for something you knew was going to be there before. Now, I'm going to have more residents? This ain't good, you know. I mean, this was our dream property. Turned into a nightmare. We're not against people working. We're not against jobs. We're not against progress. But we need to learn from our mistakes. We need to back up and fix what was wrong in the first place. You know, this, I wanted our son to grow up. Now, I get to watch in the back of people's, I can look in their sliding glass doors. Well, that ain't trouble. See them preparing dinner, putting their kids to bed. I don't want that. You know, that's just not, it's not what we set out for. That's what I said originally. You know, we needed protection. That protection got violated. There was, you know, there was supposed to be penalties, you know. We have a mixed idea of how that was handled. But we can cross that another time, too. And just like stormwater stuff. I mean, it's a big issue, you know. I've just had a conversation with Mr. Weatherly about some other stuff. You know, it needs to be handled. But, and, you know, community input. They just got done saying they want community input. Mr. McCord, you were here at the last meeting. I got told by Mr. Debo that I should sit down and shut the F up. No? I want the facts. They want you to know the facts. You know, what was I doing? I was stating facts. I got told to sit down and shut up with another, you know, exploratory word. That's how we've been treated as neighbors, you know. They want to talk about they're going to do stuff for the community? They have not done that. They have done nothing but sic their lawyers on us. We ain't asked for this. I've never been in violation on my property. Can't say the same for them, you know. And all I ask is you guys just take everything into consideration, you know. I mean, if there's a need for things, I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to progress, construction, stuff like that. But it's got to be handled right. You know, we need to go back and fix the stuff that was wrong in the first place that I told you guys. I'd be back here to tell you I told you so. And I don't want to be here. I don't want to be here doing this. This is, I don't like this. I don't want to fight with them. But they have done nothing but cause us problems, you know. If you don't want turned in for stuff, work with us, you know. But when you're wrong, you're wrong. That's just it. You were there at the community meeting. They admitted to using West Mobile Road. If they used West Mobile Road, they're in violation of the buffer. Plain and simple. All right, we'll see you 30 days, 90 days, whatever it is. All right. Thank you, guys.
And again, thank you. And all these issues and concerns, we'll discuss them when they come before us. But I do remember, you know, years ago, when it was brought up about the farms and I made the comment when I was commissioner up here that farms are a heritage of Currituck County. They always have. I used to live right behind a hog farm growing up. So, you know, it's, it was part of, it's part of Currituck. And it always will be in my mind, so. But anyways, yeah, those issues, anything concerns, the next, when it comes before us, we'll bring them out and discuss everything.
I appreciate your time. And I just ask that you take everything into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. And Mr. Mueller?
I just got called a piece of crap. No, I'm not.
You're fine?
I'm just kidding.
Okay, thank you. That was it for public, for anyone to speak. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and open the floor for a motion to the board or any further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve PB 18-27 University Park LLC Land Use Plan Amendment because the request is consistent with the land use plan because the future land use map in the draft 2006 Land Use Plan update, Imagine Currituck, shows this area at a density of up to three units per acre. The policy emphasis for the Point Harbor sub-area is to allow portions of the area to continue to evolve as a full-service community. And the request is reasonable in the public interest because it addresses a community need for diversity in housing, stock in Lower Currituck.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And at this time, I'll take a brief five-minute recess to let everybody clear up. All right. I'll now call the Board of Commissioners meeting back into order. Next up is a possible consideration action on a resolution of censure. And at this time, I'll turn that over to Commissioner Owen Etheridge to make remarks.
I have a copy here of what is being proposed to censure me for my vote on the solar ordinance back in January. And I don't agree with this. I understand what spurred this was a map that showed land that my family owned included in a pre-application meeting before the county for a solar farm. That map was drawn in 2015. And I have not had any discussions with Sun Energy since my election last year or after that election. I voted on that ordinance not to directly benefit me or my family but to benefit Currituck County. Because as we had that public hearing that night, we had people from all over the county, South End, middle part of the county, Moyoc, who asked us to adopt an ordinance that was reasonable and would allow the taxpayers of this county who have that property to benefit from holding that property and paying taxes on it all those years. And I've got to say that if doing what is right for this county invokes something like this coming forward to, because to my knowledge, Mr. McCree, has it ever been a motion of censure in the history of this county?
I certainly don't know in the history. I know certainly since my involvement with Currituck County, there has not been.
And I'm afraid it's going to open Pandora's box. Because I look at it this way. If the county manager comes to us and says that we're going to have, recommended from him, a 3% tax increase, and I make up my mind right then, I'm going to vote against it because it's going to raise my taxes? That's conflict of interest. I don't care what anybody says. The statute might not spell that particular case out, but that is. And if this is adopted, then any vote that I take or others on this board that own farmland on a text amendment or zoning change that affects farmland is in a conflict of interest and shouldn't vote. And I'll leave it up to this board. But again, I'll emphasize, I consulted with many people about this because when I was on this board before, anything that came up about the airport because I owned the property adjacent or adjoining the airport and directly benefited would directly benefit one way or the other from any actions that happened at that airport. I recused myself. But in this particular instance, because it was county-wide and it affected every citizen in this county that owned property that wants to find some way to get some value out of their property, that's why I voted on that ordinance. And like I said, if this is what it takes for doing what's right for this county, that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. McCree, the general statute basically is forward-looking and it says, "Where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on the member." In a county-wide sense, how does that affect the board? So, obviously, we make decisions every meeting that may affect either small areas of the whole county. In the case of like a land use map, it's going to affect the whole county. How does that threshold work for us as commissioners?
Well, it's a balancing act. And so, what needs to be considered by a commissioner, who is required to vote under a general law that you must, you must vote, although you may be excused unless the, if the vote is related to your financial interest or your personal conduct. But of course, we now have this additional statute that's been adopted in recent years as it relates to a legislative zoning decision. The standard is that the board member shall not vote, is not permitted to, where the outcome is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact. And so, then that takes, you know, a, on a case-by-case basis, it takes an analysis of what are the circumstances and the facts that are surrounding that particular vote? And how might that impact a commissioner or require a commissioner to withdraw or be prohibited from voting in that instance? And so, some of the writings, and some of this is what I referred to back in January when I asked this question by the board. And making that balance is determining, first of all, the number of people affected. You know, how many people are affected by the particular zoning text amendment or action? The extent of the financial interest, either to the benefit of the commissioner who is voting and may have a conflict or to the detriment. For example, if it didn't pass, would there be a financial impact to the detriment on that individual commissioner? And then some have written that, you know, obviously, the significance of a financial interest must be considered in relation to the individual's particular situation, although it might be assessed based on what a reasonable person would do in that particular situation. And then another piece of the analysis would probably be the likelihood that the financial impact will occur. And so, you know, some have written on this, on conflicts of interest and on these particular statutes, those are the types of elements they would suggest be considered in making a determination as to whether there indeed is a, in the context of a zoning text amendment, a financial interest such that it again is direct, substantial and readily identifiable, depending upon the outcome of the vote on a zoning text amendment.
Okay.
So, then as legal counsel or attorney, based on what you've just read and based on the actions that occurred, I guess, would you say that if this went somewhere or if somebody else looked at it, they would make the assessment that an individual probably should have recused himself on this?
Well, I mean, I think, again, the question is, was it, is there a reasonable likelihood of a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact? Now, that night, you know, you had a comment from Commissioner Etheridge, which is set forth in the, in the proposed resolution that, you know, his, my family has had discussions with one of the solar companies about the possibility of a lease, but nothing concrete. And then the vote was taken. And then it's set forth in the proposed resolution that was 10 days later that there was, as Commissioner Etheridge said, a plat that was delivered by a solar company to the planning department on which was written an original date of some month in 2015, but also which had, is set forth in the, in the resolution, a date more current, at least, I think, within 20, oh, January 31, 2019. And so, that, and that's just a piece that, you know, Commissioner Etheridge, if he'd known, would want to consider in this board, would want to consider, does it rise to the level as set forth in the statute of something with regard to this vote that was had, was likely to have a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact? On Commissioner Etheridge.
Yes, sir.
I got a question.
I'd like to say one more thing.
here, is how do you not know what's happening with your family's land that you are a shareholder in?
Because when you adopted the ban in January of 2017, that rendered everything moot.
Okay.
At that time, there was no further discussions. Now, whatever Sun Energy wanted to come back and say after it was adopted, I have no control over that, and I didn't have any way of knowing what they were going to do.
Now, the school of government, and this is, I guess, for our county attorney, and I remember the night when the question was asked, and I guess our chairman had Commissioner Etheridge, he said that he was in discussions with one of the solar companies about possibility of lease of land, but nothing was in concrete. And he was told he had to vote as of that night. I mean, correct?
No. I think I was asked similar question, what I've been asked tonight, and I went through the same analysis of the general statutes, which of course, again, the general rule has been and is that a commissioner must vote unless excused and may be excused if the matter being voted on involves their financial interest or their personal conduct. But then, as I said, then and tonight, there is this other statute relative to zoning matters which says that a commissioner is prohibited from voting if the matter is reasonably likely to have that direct, substantial, and identifiable financial impact. And then, of course, I didn't know what the facts were that evening, and so, it was left to each commissioner to make any disclosure or determination as to whether they should be excused from voting because they would have been prohibited perhaps by that statute.
Was that second part of that statute? And I don't remember. I don't remember what I had for lunch today. But was that second part of that statute brought up that night?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't remember.
I can render an opinion if he has information in front of him. At that time, based on the information that was presented to us, am I correct? And I'm not putting words in your mouth, that you could not render a legal opinion at that point in time?
Yes. As I said, I did not have any knowledge of the facts, and so, it would be up to any commissioner that believed that they would be prohibited by that statute from voting to make that disclosure.
And I would like to say one more thing, too, though. And I do know when this came out, the email or whatever reference the first one put in in his defense, when he said he had spoken to one of the solar companies, I had spoke to those guys via text, or not text, via email, via phone conversations, because they called all of us. And the one that we had spoke to, and I had spoke to, was First Solar, so they had had some discussions, which was not Sun Energy.
Talk to two companies.
So, Commissioner Etheridge, do you have a trustee for your property? I mean, if I own property, I'm going to want to know what's going on with it, who's signed for it, what I'm agreeing to. For them to be able to come forward and put forward a pre-scoping meeting, knowing that they're going to move forward with your property involved, there's a disconnect in there somewhere. And if you can make that bridge for me, it really would help solve this issue.
We earn undivided interest, four undivided interests in that property. So, three could... Two could say it, and three could say it, and I go along with the ride.
Okay.
But, like I said, in good conscience, I made that vote that night, and if it was before us again tonight, knowing what I know, I'd still vote.
And that's the problem. It's not about what's good for the county. It's about the law, the statutes that regulate how we act as a board, and our own ethics that we have adopted and how we operate.
I had a signed contract, yes.
Okay.
There was no signed contract to buy, purchase, lease, or anything.
Okay. And at this point in time, is there...
No.
Okay. Well, then, I think that's...
Negates this?
He said he did not have a signed contract? So, there's no money changing hands at this time?
No money has changed hands.
According to Commissioner Etheridge, if three of his siblings, I guess, or family members want to do this, they can do it without his permission. Is that correct, sir? Did I get that right? Okay.
We earn undivided interest.
Would there be any compensation? Would Commissioner Etheridge receive any compensation if the other three went forward?
Of course, I would.
Okay. Did it not state in part of the ethics and the legal training that the individual or the family member, immediate family member benefited? That's what I remember from ethics training that we all attended.
I agree.
And paying attention. So, and that's forward-looking. I think from the citizens of Currituck County, that, you know, it doesn't matter whether or not any money has changed hands. I think it's a forward-looking statute. I think, and Joe certainly thought, his brother certainly thought he was going to be profiting because that's why he came and testified in front of us.
But we're looking at this based on what ifs. That's what you're looking at.
But your brother also testified.
If that's the case, we're going to look at everything that comes forward this board in the future on zoning and text amendments, with agricultural land, on what ifs.
There is a significant difference between what ifs and plats that have the property identified, your brother that actually stated that it meant a lot of money to the family.
He said it meant a lot of money to the people of the county that had that land.
He said personally.
Well, like I say, if this is what the board wants to do, it opens Pandora's Box because also you're using section 286 of the Code of Ethics.
Is there a signed contract in place right now for the project?
No.
So, right now, it's just been presented, but nothing does...
No, we haven't.
The family can back out at this point still? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. If that's the case.
So...
So, then, well, technically, he has...
If there is a signed contract down the road and they come forward with a project, I will recuse myself on the project.
My only... And like I said, I'm, you know, I'm on the fence while we're discussing this. The night when he, the chairman, he commented on the thing, he owns farmland, it's obvious he's owned farmland in the county, when he asked, you know, and at the time, in his comments, and I'm reading them from this sheet of paper, it said, "My family has had discussions with one of the solar companies about the possibility of a lease, but nothing concrete." And he stated that, and then he had the green light to vote. Nobody else objected to him to vote that night. Am I correct?
No, we did not.
Wouldn't object to him.
Or not object, but...
Raise the question.
Raised the question to the county attorney. Should he be... I mean, because myself, when I used to do contracts for the county, but I don't do that anymore, you know, as well as Commissioner Payment has, which, you know, it's bidded stuff publicly. I mean, that's my only holdup on it was, and he said, you know, that there was, you know, nothing in concrete.
So, it's the forward-looking piece is the problem. So, Ike, when we're talking about forward-looking, is that in perpetuity? I mean, it doesn't provide in the statute, but if it's a year from now, or two years from now that his family contracted, are we going to... Would we then be coming back and saying, oh, you can't do that because it's so...
I don't know if it's that, it would be that far into the future. Because again, the statutory language is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact. So, if it's something that maybe occurs years, you know, year, two years, three years later, I mean, one might ask whether that indeed, at the time the vote was taken, was something that was likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact.
Well, what I would say is if Commissioner Etheridge had a signed contract in place and he was going to benefit right now, then I would say I would have to go along with this. But as it stands right now, what I'm hearing is you do not have anything, there's nothing in play at this moment. So, right now, nobody can benefit from it until something is signed.
So, what ifs?
But that's not what the ethics state in the law states, right?
I've read it several times. Yeah, I mean, the law speaks to, again, where the outcome is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable, and all those together, and readily identifiable financial impact.
So, reasonably likely and identifiable, we have the map that was presented within 10 days. His brother stood up and said that if it did not pass, that he would lose financial gain. And I have had people come to me that Mr. Etheridge's wife said that they would lose over a million dollars if it did not pass.
I don't think...
This is not a trial.
But still, it's just, I think the component we're missing is readily identifiable.
And it's identifiable.
Well, we...
I mean, I guess the question is going to help me understand is, what if the family backed out of this right now? Is this a new point? Or is it still...
Well, I mean, again, I think you...
I'm curious.
The statute relates to, at the time the vote was taken.
Okay.
You would be prohibited from voting at that time if there was direct, substantial, and readily identifiable impact.
Okay.
Financial impact.
At the time of the vote, okay.
Would that not require a contract and money changed hands?
I don't know that necessarily means that. It could be, you know, again, because it is, that the outcome is reasonably likely to have direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact, but not necessarily mean that at the time of the vote, there was any kind of signed contract or agreement, I don't believe.
For those of you watching at home, this is very vexing for us. We are, basically have to call penalty on ourselves, and it holds us to a very high standard individually to make these decisions and declare things and vote in the best interest of Currituck County. And sometimes, that interest is to not vote. So, it's just been, we've had discussions about this, obviously, and it's quite vexing for us. No one wants to get down this road, ever, I don't think. And...
Can we discuss immediate family? How we have discussed this before, is immediate family would be your spouse, would be your... I mean, would your brother, your sister, is that considered immediate family when you're...
Siblings.
Siblings, okay.
Well, I mean, that's a question of me, but the only real mention of family in any of the conflict of interest statutes or prohibitory statutes is 14-234, which speaks to contracting, a commissioner contracting, and also that would preclude or prohibit a commissioner's spouse from contracting or benefiting from a contract with the county.
Commissioner Bowman, is that the person, kind of what you were referring to when you were talking about the...
Well, I remember when we all were in ethics class, right? And they were patiently watching. And they alluded, it was talking about a family, and that was mine. That was mine.
Right.
Just your spouse. I mean, they went into your little family site.
When they talked about award-winning contracts to like a...
Well, and certainly, I would say with quasi-judicial matters, I mean, that statute speaks also as well.
Right.
As a conflict that would cause, to protect the due process rights of parties involved in the case, a member of a board to seek to be recused if it involved a family member.
So, the question before the board now is, do we want to adopt a resolution of censure against Commissioner Etheridge? Or at this point, have we talked about this enough, to make our point that we need to be scrupulous in our behavior and our actions going forward and be open and honest about everything so that the public has complete trust and confidence in us as a board of commissioners?
If he doesn't have a signed contract, I mean, he's not... I mean, I mean, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, just talking to somebody, I could talk to Paul Bowman about buying my tractor.
That's not...
I know, I'm just using that as an example. But if he doesn't have a signed contract or money hasn't been exchanged, has he talked to him? Yeah, he admitted to that the night of. But if he doesn't have anything concrete today, but I mean, then you go back to that definition of, and that's...
I think the verb is in here.
Readily identifiable financial impact. You know, I mean, it doesn't say 45 days. I mean, I wish it did, it'd be a little bit easier, maybe.
So, from a staff perspective, someone puts, drops, they come in and say, I want a pre-scoping meeting. Would you not normally see some sort of contract or understanding, or memorandum of understanding to be able to put a project forward, to even meet with staff on something like this? Does it help walk us through the back end of that since we're not really in the day-to-day part of that?
If that kind of request comes in, certainly, staff is going to have a, you know, preliminary meeting with them. Whoever you're meeting with is going to have to demonstrate that they have the necessary rights to progress whatever it is that they're attempting to do, either by outright owning or having some contractual interest or something in the project. But yeah, the staff is going to make sure they are the proper applicant to be here before the board.
And so, and has that meeting taken place at this point in time? I know they asked for a pre-scoping meeting, but has that occurred yet?
On that particular...
She disappeared.
I'm not... I was looking for it. They wouldn't specifically meet with me. I'm not aware that they have, but they'd meet with the planning staff, and I don't have knowledge whether they have or haven't.
I believe staff met but found that the map was not accurate enough to move forward with anything.
Okay.
I think we, as a board, have discussed this, and I think as a board member and a citizen of Currituck County, I think if we can't hold ourselves to the high standard of truthfulness, honesty, and integrity, that the people of Currituck County will lose their confidence in us as a board. I think it affects all of us. I personally, like I say, this was just not done on the fly of the cuff. We've been talking about this, and I thought we were all in kind of agreement that he would have gained a financial interest if this had, you know, he knew when he voted. So, I move to accept the resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners censoring Commissioner J. Owen Etheridge.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
Those two nays, five ayes. All right. Thank you. Oh, I know that was trying. Moving on. Next agenda, mine, board appointments. And we have Planning Board, that's the first agenda item. Someone putting forth a planning board member this evening?
Yes. I am Juanita Kraus for the Moyoc City.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Social Services Board.
I'd like to reappoint Marguerite Etheridge to the Social Service Board.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for recess of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and motion go. Move to enter closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11 to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Social Services Board.
I'd like to reappoint Marguerite Etheridge to the Social Service Board.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for recess of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and motion go. Move to enter closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11 to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um... Um...